Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, March 14th, 2019 meeting of the North Hampton School Committee. I'm David Narcoitz, the Chair of the Committee, and I will begin by asking the Clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Narcoitz?
Present.
Molly Burnham?
Present.
Ms. Nancy Chancy?
Here.
Flor Fallon?
Present.
Ms. Anne Hennessy?
Present.
Mr. Lon Kaufman?
Present.
Ms. Diana Meyer?
My dear.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Here.
Ms. Susan Boss?
Present.
Agenda.
Mr. Ed Zehauf?
I'll be checking.
No.
Your Honor, you have a floor.
Thank you very much. I do want to just let the public know that this meeting is being audio and video recorded by North Hampton Community Television. And the first item on the agenda is the public comment period. I believe we have a sign-up sheet. And I would just ask that folks who have signed up to speak, if when you come to the podium, if you could just identify yourself, your name and address, and then I will have a timer of three minutes. And I would just ask you to try to keep your remarks to three minutes so that everyone has the equal opportunity to speak. The first person who has signed up is Laurel Davis Delano.
So, I'll repeat this, but I'm Laurel Davis Delano. I'm a professor of sociology and I live at 102 Ridgewood Terrace in North Hampton. And I have a child who went K through 12 through the public schools in North Hampton. I study representations of Native Americans in U.S. popular culture. And most recently, I was on a team of academic researchers who studied this topic as part of the Reclaiming Native Truth Project managed by First Nations Development Institute and Echo Hawk Consulting. So I'm here to speak about eliminating Columbus Day. There's much evidence that Christopher Columbus engaged in murder, torture, enslavement, and other forms of exploitation against indigenous people when he came to what is called the Americas. From the perspective of many indigenous people who live in North, Central, and South America, Columbus is perceived as the first colonizer or among the first colonizers who began their suffering. Columbus began the genocide of indigenous people in many parts of the Americas, including loss of indigenous societies, loss of indigenous land, loss of indigenous ways of life, loss of indigenous control over their own societies, and the like. As a result of their historic and present-day experiences, Native Americans in the U.S. have the highest rates of -- have higher rates of poverty, physical health problems, mental health problems, as well as lower levels of education and the like. Inequality and injustices faced by categories of people are related to representations of these categories and related to these categories. In other words, representations and beliefs are intertwined with and interact with material concrete conditions. In recent years, indigenous people who live in the boundaries of the United States as well as indigenous people in other parts of the Americas have been leading a movement to provide accurate information about -- to the public about Columbus as well as about colonization more generally. As part of this movement, they rightly claim that although we should recognize Columbus as playing a major role in history, we should definitely not celebrate this role because it is historic -- it's horrifically oppressive via Columbus Day statues and the like. When we do this, we are celebrating the colonization and oppression of indigenous people in the Americas. And when we are doing this, we send a message to indigenous people that we don't care about them, and we are creating a hostile climate for indigenous people. Thus, unless you eliminate Columbus Day, you are sending this message and creating a hostile climate. Those of us who are not indigenous but who want to support indigenous people need to be sensitive to their experiences. Beyond that, we need to recognize that there are a small number of people, indigenous people, in North Hampton right now, and we need to welcome them as full members of our community. In many parts of the United States, U.S. towns, cities, and organizations have stopped celebrating Columbus Day. And the North Hampton schools can do this too. This is one way that the schools can provide a more welcoming and less hostile climate to indigenous people. So that -- North Hampton should do what's morally right. Further...
If you could just begin to wrap up.
Oh, finish the sentence, just the sentence. Columbus did not foot -- set foot in the United States' current territory. And it's wonderful to recognize Italian-Americans, but we should not do it through Columbus Day.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Cowie.
Good evening. My name is Mary Cowie. I live at 29 Royal Park in North Hampton, and I'm a math teacher at Jackson Street School. Speaking of math and numbers, you all know there's a funding crisis that's facing public schools in Massachusetts. The foundation funding formula has not been updated since 1993, and the impact on our public schools has been devastating. We've been feeling it here in North Hampton. And if we look around at some of our urban neighbors in the Pioneer Valley, like Holy Oak, Springfield, Chickpea, while North Hampton has been underfunded, about $800,000 a year, many of our neighbors have been underfunded, many, many millions of dollars every year. This is a statewide issue. It's not just us. It's really about equity across the state and funding the public education we believe in. I know I'm preaching to the choir. So what I've come here tonight to talk with you about is some of the actions that are going to be happening this week in North Hampton. We are really fortunate to have two public school parents representing us at the State House, Representative Lindsay Sabodosa and Senator Joe Comerford. They're both cosponsors of the PROMISE Act, which will fund public education pre-K to 12, and the CHERISH Act to fund higher public ed. So on March 22nd, there is going to be a hearing at the Gardner Auditorium in Boston at 10:00 a.m., and we really want to pack the place with people who are really ready to stand up for funding public education. There's going to be a bus that's going from North Hampton. It'll be leaving Sheldon Field at 7:00 a.m. and leaving Boston to come back at 3:00 p.m. So we're trying to make it easy for people to go. I myself am going to take a personal day so that I can be there. It's that much of a priority for me to see our schools be funded. So that's a sacrifice, a big sacrifice, but I'm asking all of you if you can also see your way clear to find some ways to put yourself out there for public education for the kids of our state. We're also going to be doing standouts at every one of our public schools on Thursday, March 21st, in the half hour before school. So for the elementary schools, that would be 8:15 to 8:45 earlier for the elementary -- for the high school and middle school. But again, we would love for -- especially if you can't make it to Boston, if you can make it to one of the standouts, it's a really important way to show our communities that we are all in this fight together. So I would like to just -- oops, one moment. I just would like to pass around these leaflets that just have information about those activities, a link and a phone number you can use to register for the bus. And this is just a clipboard. If you'd like to sign up and let us know if you can join us for the standouts or the Boston trip, just so you know who might be able to come. So I'll just pass this around. Thank you very much, and I hope to see you at the standouts and hope to see you in Boston. I know Dr. Provost and I are going, and I hope many others will join us. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no one else signed up, but is there anyone else who wishes to speak in public comment? Okay. All right, no problem. I thought my timer was going. So are there any announcements from members of the school committee? Ms. Fallon?
Since our student rep's not here, I just want to let everyone know that the girls' basketball team will be playing in the state finals at Holy Cross at 4:30 on Saturday. So if anyone can make it, I'm sure they would appreciate the support. And we're also hosting a letter-writing campaign on Monday night from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Jackson Street School to write letters in support of the PROMISE Act.
Okay. Other announcements? Okay.
I do.
Sure.
I can't be specific, though, but I -- since our student rep's not here, Grease is going to be at the high school on Thursday.
Opening night.
Friday.
Which is why Ed's not here, I think.
Saturday.
Two shows on Saturday.
Great.
Two shows, two and seven. All the other ones are seven. And it's practically sold out, so...
Tickets.
Any other announcements? Okay. So now we have a series of recommended actions on the consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes of the February 14th, 2019, school committee meeting. And we have budget transfers. One is the transfer for contracted services of $116,000, and then the transfer of old to a newer account of $15,000. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda but pulling the school committee meeting minutes for just a quick correction.
Okay. So is there a second on the consent agenda? Did you have...
I could second it and then make my comment, or do I make it before the second?
Is it about...
I would like to pull something to ask a question on.
Okay, what would you like to pull?
I would like to ask a question about the budget transfer related to old to new account.
Sure. Item C. So we will -- so we'll pull A and C off of the agenda, which leaves lonely little B there. So the consent agenda, then, is there's been a motion made. Will you second it?
Yes.
Okay, so seconded by Ms. Voss. And all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And now we'll take up item A of the minutes.
Yeah, it's just a quick thing, but under announcements, it looks like I'm trying to replace myself. So could it just say, "Ms. Fallon announced that an opportunity exists to have a voice as the MIAA sports -- as an MIAA sports representative, not specifically basketball, because I was hoping to keep that." Thank you.
So would you make a motion...
To move to accept the meeting minutes from February 14th, 2019?
With that correction.
With that correction.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and then you had a question about $15,000 transfer.
I did. I think this is -- I have a question and a comment. The minor thing is, in the budget transfer request, it's $15,500, so they're not consistent. And the question I have is, it says tech student help $15,500. And my question is, is this just a transfer? Was that already budgeted for, or is this additional money being spent on tech support?
So this is originally budgeted in the fiscal '19 budget under the account number previously designated by the Department of Ed for that type of expenditure. With the new Department of Ed codes, that's -- new numbers need to be 4450, so we're just taking the same budgeted dollar amount and moving it to the new account number.
Great. Thank you.
And is it -- is it different from what's on the agenda? Is it 15...
It's 15,5.
Okay. So then we just have to make the motion be 15,5.
Correct.
So moved?
So moved.
Okay, so there's a motion...
Second.
...made and seconded to basically change the account number on the same pot of appropriated money. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that is approved. The next item on the agenda is reports and recommendations. We do not have a student representative here this evening, so we will actually move to recognize our Director of Food Services, Mistel Hannah, who is going to be here to talk about two items, a food service clerical reorganization, and then a vote on a grant. So I would recognize Ms. Hannah.
Hello. So in regards to the first item, the food service clerical reorganization, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we have two individuals that work in clerical positions for the food service department, each working about four hours per day. I recently received resignation for one of those positions, so I'm hoping to move to a one-person, six-hour-per-day position for the food service office. I don't know if that requires a vote or permission or how that works, but...
Well...
Discuss.
Okay.
Do I have to update the job description?
Yeah, we may -- it may require the -- just a change of the job description to incorporate, you know, whatever duties. But as I understand it, you're going to basically take -- it'll ultimately result in savings, I would assume, for your department because of the two additional hours, and then presumably an extra benefit package depending on who that person took benefits. So, okay. Is there any questions about that, or...
And just to interject, I believe it's the same job description for...
Okay.
...positions, because the positions are split at this time.
Okay.
I'm not sure why it was initially put that way. So there's just one job description for the positions.
Okay. So will this then...
May not come back for a vote.
May not come back for a vote, then. Yes.
Will this result in any cost savings?
Yes, it should result in cost savings, yes. Saving two hours a day of labor, so...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. A benefit package for one individual.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that one. Then if you wanted to give us an update on this grant for provision two breakfasts for Bridge Street and Ryan Road?
Yeah, the wording on the agenda is a little confusing. So what I am hoping to do with the school committee is to move to a free breakfast program for all students at Bridge Street Elementary School and as well as Ryan Road Elementary School, and that would be under the provision two guidelines, which is the USDA guidelines. I think you might have received two-page frac information on that. How that happens is that we would still collect free and reduced applications from all students as we do in all of our schools. But next year, in moving to free breakfast, we would establish our base year. So for the following three years, we would be reimbursed from the government based on our base year for our breakfast only. Our lunch would be traditional as we are doing right now. I had chose in hopes to do this, that these two schools do the high percentage of free and reduced students at those two schools. But overall, I think in the long term, it might be beneficial to move to all the elementary schools over several years to be able to provide free breakfast for our students.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about that or discussions about that? So it's actually a grant program that -- or we would access -- we'd be accessing funds, USDA funds?
As we do now.
Yeah.
Right, we're just reimbursed differently than we were before. So I also did apply for some grant funds from Project Bread, and was awarded $4,000, $2,000 for each school to help with launching this if we did decide to go forward, and that would help with some administrative costs in trying to promote families to fill out free and reduced applications to get those numbers where they need to be.
Mr. Kaufman? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I just had a quick question. Are you planning on actually serving it in the classroom or in the cafeteria for everyone?
I have spoken to principals of both the principals, and they have different ideas. Overall, the goal is to serve breakfast after the bell, and that would have the best promotion and participation. And so each school has a different vision on how that would work.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
So I'm sorry, I think I got distracted, but did you say that this is at one school?
Yep, Bridge Street and Ryan Road.
Okay. And so what's -- and what's the financial impact, if any, on this for us?
Well, the financial impact wouldn't necessarily be an impact if the participation grew. And ideally, if you're offering it free to everybody, the participation would grow.
Yeah.
So we would still be reimbursed, hoping that our participation of free and reduced qualified students would increase, so therefore our reimbursement would increase.
Yeah. So what's your goal here? I mean, I like a lot of what you're saying, I'm just not getting the big picture maybe or the big highlight of it, and it sounds exciting. I think the two-page are kind of laid out some of the real advantages. What do you see as the big...
My goal overall is just to feed as many students as possible and start their day the best way possible. And so I'm just trying to figure out the best way to do that here in North Hampton schools. And I -- provision two, from the perspectives I've looked at and been shown...
Yeah.
...seems like a good fit.
And is the big stigma issue, right, of getting rid of that or not?
Yeah. I mean, breakfast is -- it's difficult. It's a challenging meal to serve as you're dealing with buses coming in, parents dropping off at different times. There's the option of going outside versus coming into the cafeteria at some schools, which obviously we want our students to have that time outside as well.
Right.
So you're taking all of that away and, you know, just providing it free, some in the classroom, some as they're walking in the door handing them the breakfast, and then also whether they choose to in the cafeteria.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for thinking new and innovative and out of the box. I just -- I don't know enough about it. I automatically trust you because you're thinking so in such a dynamic way. No, seriously, it sounds great. I read the two-page. It's a slow start to what we can do, and I appreciate your thinking about where it can go if it's -- if it works out with the other additional elementary schools we have, so I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Voss?
Thank you, yes. I agree with what my colleagues have said, and I just have a question about in the funding for this, is there any opportunities? If breakfast is served after the bell to cover, say, an extra -- I don't know what the length of time is, I'll just throw out 30 minutes in the day. I don't know how long it takes to feed kids breakfast. But we're going to have a discussion later tonight about school start times, and one of the challenges there that I'm sure we're going to talk more about is it's elementary day. School is shorter than the other schools, and if we started doing breakfast after the bell, I could imagine that we wouldn't want to shorten other things, and also if we could figure out a way to make it slightly longer, and maybe breakfast is a piece of making it longer, and affording how to do that, it would fit nicely in some other areas. So I don't know how you do breakfast after -- I don't know if there's money to pay for people to help support that in terms of watching the children.
So it's not grant-funded, so we're not given money upfront. We're reimbursed, just like we are now per person or individual that we feed. So that doesn't really change. There wouldn't be money available per se for that. My experience with after-the-bell breakfast programs as opposed to before the bell, which takes about 30 minutes, 25 to 30 minutes, after the bell typically, they say it takes between five and seven minutes for a child to have breakfast. And that time in the classroom, if that's where breakfast is ultimately consumed, is -- can be counted towards time on learning. Teachers sometimes do activities, homework correction, socializing time, but still it's all in that same basket. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Yeah.
Ms. Hennessy?
Just quickly, thank you. I love it. And Ms. Fallon, Ms. Bezansky, Dr. Provost, and I went to a conference last year at Clark, and one of the presenters was on the breakfast after the bell and just the unbelievable positive outcomes. So I think this is a great step, and it's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So it's not like -- I guess it's not a grant. So you're asking for a vote? We need a vote, or...
Permission to do so?
Okay. Permission granted. So would you like to fashion a motion that the school committee endorses the provision two?
I move for the school committee to endorse breakfast after the bell at Bridge Street School and Ryan Road School.
Second.
As presented.
Second.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So unanimous on both?
Well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much again. The next item on the agenda is a conference request. This is for -- at North Hampton High School. It's called the Pencils Down Conference, March 26th through the 27th, 2019, in Baltimore, Maryland. And I believe Ms. Podell is here to talk about the conference and answer any questions that we have about it. So maybe you want to just give us a quick introduction to what it's all about?
Hi, I'm Jenny, or just Podell, I guess. So I was invited along with a student to attend a conference for all College Board employees that will show the representation of what an AP curriculum is supposed to give their students. And the College Board will pay for myself to go, and it's a volunteer position for me, and will fully fund a student to come with me so that that student can partake in a little committee that's going to happen on the first day, where College Board employees can ask, like, the impact of AP testing and how that influenced kind of my students' choices and what she's taken at school, and just get some kids' opinions on their AP program and how it's benefited or maybe not benefited them. And then we get to give a sample lecture. I say "we" because this way my student can give some examples of what my kids would really say in an AP class. So we're asked to present to about 150 to 200 College Board employees in showing a representation of what class would be like, so that people who work for College Board all around the world understand what they are supporting. The curriculum that they hope to be endorsing and promoting is basically set by the lesson that I will give with the help of my student. So that's the plan. And the conference runs all day on Tuesday and Wednesday, but we're just going to be there for the Tuesday dinner portion and panel after dinner, and then we will be there on Wednesday morning to do our lecture, and then we will leave on Wednesday to come back here.
Okay. Has this student been selected already?
Yeah, so I selected my teacher's assistant, who also took AP 1 Physics with me last year and is in my AP Physics C, Mechanics, and Electricity and Magnetism, which you know about because your daughters took that one.
Yes.
Yes. So I picked my TA because if I can only pick one student, I really adore all of my students, and I wish I could take them all, but funding says I could take one. So I chose my TA because this way I wasn't singling anybody out.
Any questions about that? So could I get a motion to approve the field trip request?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Have fun in Baltimore.
Very excited. Very much.
Have some crabs for me. I love Baltimore. Ballmer.
Ballmore.
Let's call it Ballmer.
Say it right.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a job description. This is an item Dr. Provost will present, and it's for the new equity position in the district.
Thank you. This is just moving our thinking and our conversation a little bit further than it was at the time of the first view budget. This job description actually was prepared, but I wasn't -- didn't want to be so presumptuous to share it at that meeting. One of the questions that came up in that discussion and then has come up in with some of my -- some of my conversations with the members of the school committee since then are really to sort of clarify the goals. And I think of this position as having two goals. The ultimate goal is to improve equity of outcomes for students within the district. You know, you've heard me present a number of times about equity gaps we have in the district, and really closing those gaps is really being the only strategy we have to improve overall outcomes for students, because some of the students in our -- wouldn't be considered diverse, they're already basically pegging out every kind of measure we have. So that's the ultimate goal. The proximate goal would be to help us recruit a more diverse teacher workforce. So I think that is the thing that you'd be able to see most quickly. And then further on down the road, I would hope that we'd be able to have less of a gap between the positive outcomes that we're able to produce for students who are members of majority groups and students who are members of minority groups. So in this, I just call your attention to item number one in the essential functions, which is the one that has to do with employee recruitment. I also would draw your attention to number five, because when I presented it, I talked about analytics, because I thought that one of the things that this person would be doing quite a bit is helping us to analyze our data, helping us to maybe better see some of our blind spots in ways that some groups of students are succeeding better than others. Of course, all the job description is important, but those two things that I would just draw your attention. And the other thing I would say is, this is only a vote on the job description, this isn't a vote on the funding that goes with it, but it's to give you more information so that you can have a better understanding of what you'd be voting for or voting against at the next meeting.
Okay. So there's not -- you're not actually asking for a vote to approve the job description?
I am for a vote to approve the job description, but not for funding for the job description at this -- for the job at this point.
Okay. Okay. So I see two hands. Is it a parliamentary question, or...
No, I just had a question about the?
Did you make a motion just to put it on the floor?
Uh, yeah, sure. I'm moved to approve the job description for the equity position.
Okay. Second for now?
Second.
Okay. So, question and question?
Um, so, my question is just, um, that you, Dr. Provost, just said how the ultimate goal was to, um, ensure equity of outcomes, but that's not in the job description, really, like, that's not literally in there. It's alluded to, we talk about other things, and it seems like if that's our ultimate goal, that maybe that should be embedded in there. So, I don't know where you'd wanna put it, or if I'd have to make a motion now, but...
You can make a motion to amend it, to add that, or?
Right, but I'm just saying, I don't know we're the best place to?
So, I would think that it would be in the definition, or, um, and I'll just share, another member asked whether this position being as unique as it would be within our district deserves a rationale. Um, I just got that question, I think it was yesterday or today, so I haven't had a chance to check with HR on that. Um, that's not something that I've seen in any other positions. But, if HR is okay with the concept of putting a rationale in the position, that might be a good place to, to embed that kind of goal.
Yes, Ms. Buzansky.
Uh, so, you described in our first view of the budget, a half-time position, but this is full-time?
Right. So, the job description is written for our goal of getting it up to full-time. At this point, we only have funding for half-time. Um, so, obviously, the expectations of someone who were able to bring on, in a half-time capacity, wouldn't be as high as they would be for someone who would be able to bring on in a full-time capacity. But, in similar way to many other positions we have, where there are both full-time employees and part-time employees, we don't change the job description for the part-time employees, we just expect less, 'cause they have less time to devote to the position.
Got it. So, we'll put it out there as a, we're writing a full-time job, but we'll put it out there as a half-time?
At this point, that's right. That's all we've been able to find. But, in the event that we're able to find more funds to increase it, then, you know, we would be able to increase the hours, the job description would still apply. We would just say, okay, we need you to do more of this now.
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Um, so, last time we spoke about this, I had mentioned a concern, I shared a concern. Um, I no longer have that concern. What I did is, I, you know, I, I spent a lot of time talking to people. I spoke to, I think, about 10 people, students, alumni, people in my community, and I, I was concerned, and I still am a little bit concerned about, you know, identifying an individual for a position, and thus, that becoming that person's job. And I've seen that happen, so I'm concerned about it, but not a, not, not as concerned anymore, certainly not to not be excited about the position, which I am now. And that's because people convinced me that, people that have done this work have really seen that you need a designated person. It's too squishy otherwise, it just becomes easy, too easily forgotten in other people's job descriptions. So, I appreciate the effort here a great deal. Um, so, with that said, um, I really wanna attract the best person possible, so I have some, um, comments and questions regarding the job description that I would, I certainly wanna throw out there for your consideration. Um, first, I do think it was a great idea eliminating that analytics piece from the job title. It's still there, and it's still a key component, thank you, but it was, it was getting confusing. Um, I do think that by making it necessary that the person has one of those certifications, that we're eliminating potentially a lot of strong candidates, is there any way around that, that they're Massachusetts certified for those different administrative posts? Is this position potentially unique enough that we could, um, work around that?
So, the, the way that that's frequently worked around is to add another bullet point in the qualifications, saying other qualifications that the superintendent deems are appropriate.
Yeah. Have you thought about that, and is that something that you?
I have. I actually think that would be a good addition.
Okay. And if you wanna ask other people?
I do think it would be, and, and in particular, um, if there's someone from another state, then, right off the bat, they might not understand what it takes to become Massachusetts certified. But, I, I am, I do think that this is a unique job with a special skill set, and I think we wanna make it as broad as possible to attract good candidates. Um, the other idea, and, you know, I, Dr. Provost mentioned, it was, it was, I, I strongly believe that we would be in a much better place if we introduced within the job description some sort of background or rationale. And the people we do it for is actually, I think, for your position. We, we have done that for superintendent positions before, and put something out there that, um, just makes it really attractive. So, if we can do that, and you can fight for it if someone says no, or the Americans support it, I, what I have in mind is something that, again, that we talk about this community, and the unique special qualities of Northampton, that we make it enticing. And, I, I think we need to really begin by citing some of the amazing things we already do in the schools, uh, and I thought about what we've done. So, I know we did PD last year, or the year before with Barbara Love. I know all our staff were trained. We have amazing NEF grants that really seem to extend the, um, the types of learning and activities that we do into a more inclusive environments. Speaking of inclusion, we went towards full inclusion. Uh, we have multicultural events each year, and I know I'm just scratching the surface. So, I think that would be exciting for somebody to see, that they're walking into a district that has already embraced this. Um, and, you know, and I think a strong statement that we're really committed to growing this work and getting there. And you, and I just took a glance, Dr. Provost, of how you wrote this middle paragraph in your budget, and, you know, something like that, that really speaks to your heart and our heart. I like, enough is enough. You know, we, we need to close the achievement gap, it's been going on too long. This is not the result of educators, this is the result of societal sort of pressures that kids are facing with. And we, as a district, are making a commitment to moving there. And that's the kind of bold sort of, boldness, I think, that will be attractive to folks. I'm really excited by the prospects of seeing who would, who would do this. Um, so, I congratulate you for moving ahead with it, and I just, I guess I'm just encouraging you to think the ways that we could attract candidates that are gonna make a really, uh, positive difference and, and correspond to the goals that you just shared with us.
I would just add that, you know, there's the job description, which is sort of the technical, you know, and then there's actually the job posting.
Yeah.
Those can be much different.
Okay, thank you.
You know, what goes up on, on schools, whatever it's called.
School spring.
School spring, sorry.
Okay. I would add, I would, I would endorse the idea of much more widespread posting.
Yeah.
More than just school spring, which is kind of a novelty, I think, a lot of Massachusetts people know about, and maybe not others. But, you're right, if there's another way to advertise, uh, and this sort of, if Dr. Provost can develop some sort of intro, that makes it enticing, that would be, I think, more than welcome and a good idea.
Um, so, I'll follow up on that, and, and thank you. Um, I think this is a super important position, and it's brand-new. And so, I don't, I'm not trying to be negative, but I think we need to work on this, um, job description, because it can be even better. And so, what we're doing here is so important that it's, to me, worth it to take a step back and say, how can we make this much more clear? And I'll, I, I guess, I wanna start by saying I don't know who participated in writing it, but, um, and then I, I just have some, a few specific suggestions and ways to go. In some ways, I think it needs to be shorter. And, and I agree with Ms. Fallon, when, when I read it, it's not really clear what the person's doing. And I, I think we've, um, made some suggestions here, and I have a few others. But, did, did the group real racial equi, uh, um?
Group?
Um, yes, sorry. Our group real racial equity and learning within Northampton, have they had a chance to weigh in on this, or any other sorts of groups, um, that, um, have, members of them that think about this?
The anti-bias committee created the first draft of this.
Okay.
And then it went to the central office team. The modifications made by the central office team were really minor.
Okay.
Basically, the, the main thing we changed was to make the bargaining union non-rep, um, for the reasons that we discussed at, at the last meeting.
Okay.
Also, put in some of the language about titles and things that, you know, um, teachers might not be aware of. But, the, the essence of it came from them. And then it went to HR. So, I would say, you know, down to qualifications, that
Yeah.
was the work of the, of the anti-bias committee and the central office team. And then, the preferred competencies are more or less boilerplate language that HR put on.
Okay. So, I mean, I think what it says is the, exactly the right kinda stuff. I just worry that it's not as clear as it could be. And one example is, somewhere in the beginning, you know, when I think about what this person's gonna do, I, if I have to do it in a sentence, I, what I wrote was something like, oversee development and administration of equity and diversity-related initiatives, and the assessment of them. Like, big picture. It's really not about, um, just hiring a more diverse staff. Yes, that's a piece of it, but a bigger picture is systematic, systemically through our school system, working to make this a much more inclusive environment for years to come. And so, like, that's one specific example. But, if we can make it more broad, I think it attracts a bigger-thinking kinda person. And, um, another example, you, you actually highlighted under essential functions. Some of these are just big picture, and some are so nitpicky, I think it would be hard for a person applying for this job to know which one to focus on. But, five, collect and analyze data to support and enhance equity, diversity, and inclusion initiatives, and to provide risk assessments regarding discrimination, inequity, and district culture and climate. But then, so that's an essential function, but there's nothing under the qualifications that relates to that essential function. And so, that's just another example where I think, with a little time, and I'm happy, or other people, maybe people in real, others getting more input on this, just to brainstorm how we can make it tighter. Um, under qualifications, it says demonstrated knowledge of issues of social justice. Um, I'd go, I'd rather word it something like experience and success in equity, diversity, and inclusion leadership. So, not just they know it, but they actually have demonstrated real success in these things. So, those are just a couple suggestions. I just think that kind of, um, like, fine-tooth comb on this before we send it out and approve it could make it that much better. And I'm really excited about it. I think, you know, the intent of it is amazing, and that's why I marked it up, because I want it to be really good.
Okay. So, um, so, given that there's, I don't know how we wanna proceed, given that there's, the funding's not there, that's a further down the road. Do we wanna postpone this vote, and have you send some comments, or how would you like to proceed?
So, what I actually think I'd like to do, since this meeting is videotaped, is meet with, again, with the anti-bias committee, play the tape for them, let them take in the committee members' comments, and
Okay.
see what kind of revisions we can come up with.
That's great.
Okay. Ms. Hennessy?
My, my one concern is, regardless of how it comes out, is what Ms. Buzansky said at the beginning, that it's, it's a full-time posting, a jet, for a full-time job, and I worry about how it, the reality of a half-time, um, and how that's gonna be prioritized and supported. The, I worry about a person being taken advantage of, because they're gonna be working, I mean, they're so interconnected that it does seem like a full-time job, and we've talked about this at the last meeting. So, that's, as you're writing that, that's just my major concern, that I don't, it feels like more than a full-time job. It feels like a department. And, so then, knowing that it's gonna be a half-time position, um, I actually really, I, I was reading it, and that's all I thought of the whole time. So, that's my, my comment.
I have one more comment. When I read it, I actually thought it had changed from a half-time to a full-time position since our last meeting, and I would just second that, that I have similar concerns of how somebody can do this in a full, in a half-time position.
Ms. Fallon?
So, I'm wondering, since you made a motion and seconded it, do we vote it down, or do we make a new motion?
Um, I would just say that if the makers of the motion wanted to withdraw their motion...
So, I can withdraw my motion?
Sure, fine. And then, we'll just, we'll bring it to the next, you know, I don't think we have to.
Okay.
Nothing imminent about it, so, there's no funding for it. It wouldn't happen until July 1. So, we have plenty of time to go back.
Okay. Okay. So, um, the next item on the agenda is a couple, uh, first, a gift. Um, this is a gift from the NHS PTO of $1,100 for theater equipment. Um, uh, would someone make a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, the gift from NHS PTO to Friends, oh, excuse me, which is Friends of the Northampton Theater, for $1,100 to purchase equipment for the Black Box Theater.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, Ms. Lamica, did you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, next, we have a vote on a grant from the JFK PTO. Would someone make a motion to put that on the table? Ms. Burnham?
Sure. I'll make a motion to put on the table the PTO grant for $2,820 for the Boston Globe Scholastic Writing Group.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. Ms. Lamica, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I wanted to bring to the committee's attention was, um, on the donation form itself, it said the deposit to the account would be to the Student Activity Fund. That will not be the case, it'll be going to the, um, gift account in the city's records.
Okay. Do you have a question, Ms. Fallon?
No, it's not a question. I would just like to say that I think this program is so valuable, um, and that I would love it if we could figure out a way to fund it other than through the JFK PTO. Um, it was funded for three years prior to this by, um, the Northampton Education Foundation, and the PTO picked it up this year. And I know that they can't afford to cover the cost of this program indefinitely. But, I'm grateful they did this year.
Okay. Yep. So, duly noted. Um, all those in favor of accepting the gift from JFK PTO, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Um, next, we have a vote to authorize the superintendent to negotiate with NACE for bus driver training. Dr. Provost?
I realize that we are currently in contract negotiations, but I would request authority to do this outside of the contract, because this is an issue that, as you know, is very pressing for us. We've had inability to find bus drivers since the beginning of the year. Um, we actually had to transfer funds back from personnel line items to contracted services, because we don't have enough drivers for our buses. Um, we've tried a number of different recruitment, um, mechanisms, and at this point, we're feeling our best option is to train our own drivers. Um, so, we do have some individuals who we think have the skills, but just aren't currently licensed. However, as I've also shared with you, Van Gool, Durham, and all the rest of the contractors who we work with, they're also short-staffed for bus drivers. So, I'm not interested in training staff to go work for one of our other vendors. So, one of the things that I talked with NACE about, sort of in a hypothetical way, is if we could have an agreement that created a disincentive for employees who we trained, uh, and, and were able to obtain licenses for, to leave the district. Um, so, we talked about basically withholding a portion of the salary that was equal to the amount that the district spent on training for the individual over a period of time, and then refunding that if the individual was still with the district at the end of that, that working period. Um, so, that's basically the concept. NACE is open to the concept, um, and I'd just like to try to explore that a little more.
Any comments, or someone make a motion for that, and we could debate it?
We've authorized the superintendent to negotiate with NACE for bus driver training.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Hennessy?
So, I feel like I'm super negative right now, but I really have a problem with, with that. Um, I absolutely understand it from an economic perspective. It makes so much sense. And I've been thinking about this a lot. Um, my problem is that I feel like we keep punishing the lowest-paid people. And we train, I'm trained, my district pays me for PD, and no one says, we're gonna withhold your salary if you leave to go to a better-paying district. Um, and people do. Um, and so, I feel like, I, it just sits with me wrong. I don't feel good about it, and I, and I don't like when we, we hit the lowest-paying paid people. And so, that's my opinion on it.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes, Ms. Lamica?
If I can just follow up for a minute. Um, one of the things that, with the candidates that we've looking at, we've actually, um, have met with folks from Mass Hire, and as of July, they will have funds to train people in the future. Um, so, right now, they do not. So, we've found a few candidates right now that have CDL licenses, but they don't have school bus endorsement licenses. Um, so, that's what the issue is, and it costs a certain dollar amount to get that license. Um, and we're looking for some commitment from those folks to stay with us if we pay for that training, and provide them this education piece, that they're willing to stick it out with us. And, well, we are looking at potentially taking the money in the beginning, but then they would get that back. So, it would be no cost to them, and they would get it upfront, and it works out for everyone.
Ms. Foss?
Um, can you share with us roughly how much money we're talking about, in terms of the number of drivers, and how much this training costs?
Uh, the training that we've talked to the vendors, about $2,400 each person. Um, and we're trying to work with the vendor about, you know, after so many days, we'd evaluate whether that person is gonna make it through the program, um, whether we would be paying that full amount or not. Um, and that's what we're looking at doing.
Yes. Uh, I wanna just offer something from my own experience, which might make it a little bit more palatable to you. Um, so, I went through two higher ed programs, through federally-sponsored programs, all of which had a penalty if I didn't work in public education for a certain number of years. So... years. So, it's kind of that same concept, it's not something that's only for bus drivers.
And I would add that we, on the city side, we have some, some training opportunities for mid- and upper-level management, where they do, you know, through Suffolk University, and we have a process whereby we, they sign an agreement that if they leave in less than three years, that they'd have to pay back, you know, the city's portion of it.
Yep.
So it's not something that's just, but, yeah. It's a, it's a common model, so. So there was a motion made and seconded. Any further, and again, this is just to authorize the discussion about a possible MOU, and then you'd bring that back to us for us to review and approve.
That's right.
Okay. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is a discussion. This has actually turned to our colleague, Ms. Hennessy, who asked to have this on the agenda. This is a discussion about changing the start time of the elementary, middle, and high schools to all begin 30 minutes later.
So, I'm sure, you know, because of open meeting laws, we don't talk about this, but I know that, you know, the last time we voted on this was a while ago, and a lot of people in different meetings present, offer their opinion on how they support a late start, and it just never comes up. And I feel like sometimes, we, we know the research that schools shouldn't start for high school students and middle school students any earlier than 8:30. So like, we know the research, it's super clear, it, you can't argue with it. So it's been about the process and how we do it. And so I feel like we've been letting the perfect get in the way of the good, and that if we can, and Dr. Provost has spent a lot of time on this, we could, without cost, bump everything up 30 minutes. It's not perfect, but it's later, and that possibly that would begin a process of us, we'd have movement, I guess. And that's what I, I think we need as a community, the communities behind this. With that said, I think we need a process where the community, who it's really going to affect, gets to talk a little bit about it, and that's the elementary school parents and middle school parents, and, because while it's clear, you know, Boston started to put it forth, and they had to pull it back because of some of this, the weeds, and a lot of other communities, if you look on, I don't know, if you look on website of all these Massachusetts schools moving toward it, it's the process that gets stuck. And to me, if there's no cost, it's one way of getting us moving in this direction. Again, it's not perfect, it's not 8:30, but it's, it's getting us moving as a community, and I think we've all supported this in the past, and I just think our community, aye, so I want to see more of this, us moving. So that's why I wanted to open up a discussion, and Dr. Provost had done a lot of due diligence in figuring out how we could move it up at least 30 minutes.
Okay. Well... I would note that the school committee moved its time 30 minutes back, and we all survived, but that's a different story. So, anyone else want to comment on that?
Yeah, I really want to thank Ann for bringing this up and getting another way of thinking about this, and I really agree with her about getting the elementary schools involved in this conversation, and one of the things that I've always noticed about this conversation is that there's a plethora of data about high school students, and many times, the conversation goes, "Well, just move the elementary schools to earlier." And just this feeling like, well, actually, there's not a plethora of data about what's perfect for elementary schools, and for those students. And it's fine, you know, on a very personal anecdote, which I actually don't usually like to draw from, I have two kids, one is an early riser, one isn't. My kid who got up early did not want to go to school early, and cognitively, younger kids do not have the executive function to push themselves out of the school, out to school, whereas I do think high schoolers do have that executive function. And so, I really, really, really like the idea of going for something that's closer, and I really like the idea of getting the elementary parents talking about this, because it would move them to later, which it's already pretty late.
Yes, Dr. Provost?
Since you have the floor, I just want to remind you of something you shared with me earlier today that I thought was a really good idea.
Okay.
In terms of getting feedback from the elementary schools, you had suggested having the school councils weigh in on this, which I think makes perfect sense.
Yeah, they're the perfect place.
Okay. Dr. Voss?
I mean, I'll echo what I heard and just say thank you for bringing it up. Must have been over a year ago that I told people that Dr. Provost and I had met with some professors at UMass, and I just want to report, I have actually found out that they're working on it, and they don't have anything to present yet, but there, there's a graduate student thinking about our busing, and, you know, I, I actually think that that kind of study takes some time and some community conversation, and that we should not hold this up for that, but I hope to be able to report back in a few months anything they maybe have thought about in terms of our busing and making it less expensive, but I'm really glad to see this on the agenda. Many years before I was on the school committee, I shared concerns about flipping the elementary school at the high school, and I think that this model that Ms. Hennessy has proposed is, in a lot of ways, a really smart way to go, because it's a step in the right direction, but it's not as big of a thing where you'd have maybe some really unintended consequences associated with it, and to just add to the discussion, as this moves ahead, I think we also need to hear from the teachers. As a, you know, teachers have children in daycare, for example, and it's this time of year, they need to be thinking about what their needs are for their families next year, and so, the, there's a lot of thoughtful things that need to happen, and that isn't a reason to say not to do it, but it is one of those things where if we, if we nudge it, like you're proposing, I think that's a really good thing. Yeah.
Ms. Fallon, and then Ms. Burnham?
I just wanted to bring up, because Dr. Voss had just mentioned about flipping the start times for the elementary and the high school. That was, last year at the MASC Summer Institute, there was a session on school districts that had changed the start time, and that was one thing, I think it's Monomoy, the regional district, had flipped the times, and they said that they had been so focused on the high school, but there had been all these benefits to the elementary school to starting earlier, that they had fewer nurses' visits, fewer disciplinary problems, children weren't as sleepy at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So I would, I wouldn't like to, I don't want to discount the possibility that there are benefits to the elementary school students to starting earlier, because I do worry that 9:20 is going to be tough for working parents to try and get their kids to school. So I'm all for figuring out a way to make a later time work, but I, I don't, I would like to see if there's more research on elementary schools, even if it's just putting out a request on one of the superintendent lists, serves to ask, you know, what the results have been, because I know that that was something that we all asked them to do, was really track their data in a definitive way over the next couple of years while they were looking at this.
Ms. Burnham?
And just to, to add to this, I think that, especially since Susan has just reported on that the UMass study is going ahead, this might be a time, and Downey sort of had, there's a few people that are the historical record here that remember that there was a time when parents seemed to be resistant to elementary kids and older kids riding on the bus, and it might be a time for us to explore that, you know, and, again, bringing in all of, you know, the whole community, the school councils could reach out to the elementary school parents and see if there's changes, and I think that, again, you know, teachers always play a part in this, because they have, you know, they're always with the students, and they meet with the parents, so, you know, not only as like, how their lives work as teachers in our community, and also as facilitators of change, whatever we, we do, it is always with them. So I would like that, you know, that that could be put out as a question for them, too.
Do you have a, then, Dr. Provost, and Ms. Voss?
I just have a comment about process, that, you know, in my office, I've got a shelf full of late start plans created by me and my predecessors, all of which have been voted down. I think that having too many options at once could cause us to have the same result that happened in the past. I think it should be one idea at a time, yes or no, and then, that's just my feeling. I can't predict that for sure, but I think it would be simpler to only put one option in front of people.
So, so the option that Ms. Hennessy has started the conversation with, I'm not sure if people watching are aware of exactly what was proposed, which is to start each school half an hour later, and then to end each school half an hour later, correct? And I just, I think that's one option, but I, I don't mind brainstorming a little and just offering one other, which, take it or leave it. The real, one of the issues is, starting an elementary school at 9:20 is on the late side for a lot of families, and when you start looking at the way our buses work, the really big constraint seems to me to be, our elementary day school is a half hour shorter, roughly. There's five minutes off, but I'm just going to talk in terms of 30 minutes, because it's easier to think about. So if the high school starts at 7:30, what time does JFK start? Just before 8?
Yeah, 7:5.
Can I, I'm just going to say 8, because it's easy for me to think in terms of a half hour, and then the elementary school, I'm going to just say 9. Is that okay? Okay. So if you shift all those by half an hour, what you notice is, there's a whole hour between when JFK and the elementary school start. At the end of the day, we end at 2, 2:30, and 3, okay? And so there's only a half hour between each of the schools at the end of the day, and that's because the elementary school day is roughly a half hour shorter than the other two school days. And so, if you, you need to make up for that, either in the morning or in the afternoon with the busing, which is how we get to the elementary school day starting so late. But if you want to shift everybody a little later, my suspicion is, and I don't know for sure, that you could start the bus, the schools at 8, 8:30, and 9, okay? And then you have a problem at the end of the day, and I see two different ways you could go about solving that, if that's what you did. One, you could figure out a way to extend that elementary day somewhat, and that might not mean more hours for the teachers, I don't, maybe it means more recess or more after-school activity, that's a conversation, but you could extend the elementary school day in some way. Or you could say, this is benefiting the middle school and the high school kids, based on what we've all been talking about, so maybe they give a little, and another thing would be to say, maybe there's not a bus at the high school at 2 o'clock, maybe there's a later bus, because the high school has so much wonderful stuff happening after school, and it's good for the kids to be there, that we rearrange the way we bus home from the high school, and that could potentially solve it, and not have the elementary school day start that late.
So, Ms. Buzansky?
I just want to thank you, Ms. Hennessy, for bringing this up, because I think we really are overdue to restart this conversation, and I think it's something that we all have, you know, or we've heard a lot about, and I think a lot of us believe, I know for one, I really do believe in figuring out, figuring out a way to crack this nut, and I think we have to move away from the perfect. I think, Dr. Voss, you bring up a couple of really good ideas about how we might be able to approach it. I think we're going to, we are going to bump up again, against parent, working parents who have a hard time getting, you know, having the elementary day start at 9:20. So, if we're going to charge the school council with looking into this, I just really like to encourage them to really try and hear from their community, and not just have a decision that's made or discussed at the school council, and I think, and I believe the PTO is another great resource. They access their parents in all sorts of ways to really hear from our community, otherwise I think this could really backfire. And I know we're trying to come up with a, you know, cost-neutral way to do this, but I think that maybe there is some way to think about, what do we do with, what could those kids be doing from 9 to 9:20, or, you know, 3 to 3:30, if not, you know, you know, some way that might cost something, but not as much as, you know, that $100,000, $90,000 price tag we kept seeing, whatever it was, eight, six, eight, 10 years ago, you know, like some smaller amount, because I think that's, you know, we've all sort of identified that's kind of the catch in all this.
So, oh, just, Mr. Meyer?
I hope that we can move the start time later, but before we spend a lot of time talking about it, I hope that the committee understands that we will make some people in our community very unhappy if we make an adjustment, and that might just be part of our job, that if we think that it's better for enough of our students educationally and health-wise, that we make that decision. We, we don't allow, you know, kids under a certain age to work, because we don't think it's a good thing for them, right, as a society? We have laws against that. We require kids under a certain age to get work permits. Again, their families could use the money, but we say, "No, we're going to limit your hours." So we do a lot of things that, you know, through regulation or through policy, make members of the committee unhappy. And I, I think that we spent four, my first four years on the school committee, spending a lot of time on this. It's like, when Sue's talking, it's like listening to Howard when he would, you know, before he was on the school committee, would spitball from, you know, in public comment about how we could change things. And I think we invested a lot of time and resources in coming up with solutions, but at the end of the day, you're going to have parents, and I still remember, you know, Tom Dumphy meeting me after the meeting and saying how I was going to take away his time with his kid after school, and they're going to be passionate, and if you don't have the stomach to make that change, then it probably isn't worth investing a lot of time in.
So how do we advance this discussion? Like, what's the, where do we go from here? Mr. Zahalsky?
I'm not sure exactly where we go from here, but what I would say is that the discussion tonight has started around this idea of adding 30 minutes onto the start time and end time of our schools, and I think perhaps where it starts is, do the school councils giving some information, from folks hearing about this through the meeting this evening, and then sharing their thoughts with us, and see what the appetite of the school district is for making this change. But I will echo Mr. Meyer's comments. One of the reasons that this change hasn't happened is because there isn't a perfect solution. In order to get those minutes for the most needed students of sleep, which we know through studies, is to move the high school start time to a later time, and we come up against affecting other groups as well. And I think the one that will be most impacted here, it certainly will be the elementary schools, as I've heard many of you speak of tonight. And I, too, have had many conversations with parents of young students who have shared with me the struggles that it is at times to get their school, their students to school for 8:50, and the threshold has always been 9 o'clock, and we've gone over that by 20 minutes by offering this proposal. So I certainly expect that I'm going to hear from many elementary school parents who say that this is going to be challenging. But that's what it is, it's challenging, it's not impossible. It will affect people, their work, their family life, but I think, again, as Mr. Meyer said, if it is the recommendation and then the vote of the school committee, that in order to achieve the goal of having high school students go to school at a later time, this is one of those times where we're going to have to make a tough decision. And so I thank Ms. Hennessy for bringing this forward. I think it's a proposal that is, you know, doesn't affect the cost of anything to the district financially, but it will cost families time, maybe needing childcare, transportation. We don't know how it will affect those other families, but I think we owe it to the community to let them weigh in, share their thoughts with us, and then we can come back to the table and have a discussion about whether or not this is the direction we want to go. But I think, as Dr. Provost said, it's very important to keep very specific ideas on the table at once, so that we can either accept them or decline them and move on to another type of idea that might achieve what we're after.
I was curious, what's the process for getting, is this, do the principals set, help set the agenda for school councils, correct?
Yes.
So there would be, there could be a communication that we wanted all the school councils to put this on their agenda and have a discussion, and, okay?
You know, and I've been doing research on this, and everyone else did research a long time ago. Seattle, though, recently did this, they did a three-year community public, it was just a campaign, and "Let's Figure This Out," and it was multimillion-dollar, I mean, this was like a $16 million cost, so this is a very different district, but my point is, I do think, if, even if we set a date, like, hey, we have until, this is what we're doing, we want to do this, I don't care what it is, this is one proposal, but we want to do this for the 2021, '22 school year, we want the communities to win, because frankly, so many people who are incredibly impassioned about this, their kids are out of college now. And so, a lot of people haven't been in this discussion, particularly elementary school students or families, and so I'm, I'm open to anything, I just think... And so, I'm, I'm open to anything, I just think we need to move. And I do think, I really think that the community, families, teachers, administrators really need to be a part of this, and I know it's been done before, but for me, I think we need to do it. And setting a timeframe is, makes perfect sense, as Mr. Donnie, Mr. Zahalski said.
So, there's not really a vote necessarily tonight, it was just a discussion, but the idea then would be to try to advance this to the school councils to get the conference.
We need to instruct our superintendent to do that, or we go, is that good enough?
I think it's good enough.
Okay.
I did have one comment.
Sure.
You know, I think one of the things about the, you know, the discussions before and since, it's really interesting, I don't know, it's some sort of psychology thing, that, you know, whatever the status quo is, is seen as being completely sort of acceptable and normal. And I think when you think about these changes and you recognize, at least in our family, we had to make enormous adjustments when we went from having no children to having children, to having children in preschool, you know, in terms of when we, you know, because we have jobs, you know? And then enormous adjustments from preschool to elementary school, and then from elementary school to middle school, and middle school to high school, and still. So, so each one of those adjustments we made without saying, how come they, well, we did, actually, you say, how come they set it up this way? But we didn't, but we, but we recognized that it had to be set up somewhere, and that this happened to be the way it was. And we made enormous shifts around. Already, you know, people do amazing things because of the elementary school start time, right? Every single one of the elementary schools has some sort of affiliated program where people can drop their kids off at 7:00 or 6:30 or something in the morning because, well, they need somebody to watch their children until the schools start already. And we don't talk about that now with the present thing. We act as though before school is no problem for everybody. Well, no, there's, there's a large number of kids at every single elementary school who parents are having to make a big, a big sort of whole research project and figuring out the drop-offs and doing all these things. And the same thing after school. We act as though, you know, everybody's got after-school wired. The answer is, yes, they do, because, you know, nobody drops off the face of the earth. But it's not like it was just easy or is easy for everybody. There's plenty of scrambling around on a regular basis to make sure you have coverage for your kids. And, you know, depending on what you do for a living, that either changes day to day or you figure out some kind of a routine that lasts until the other components of that routine say move away, or, or, you know, whatever, whatever, however that routine got figured out. And so, it's, so it's not like the status quo is just like perfectly calm water and nobody had to do a lot of work. And I think, then when you talk about making changes, it's, so many of the arguments against any change, no matter what the change is, are actually, would be valid arguments against the status quo as well. You know, in terms of, well, that's just not going to work for, that's right, it's not. You know, I mean, the classic one is, the classic one that I think I see is, is the one saying, well, you know, older kids take care of younger kids. Correct. But those older kids were once younger kids, and unless these people are on some kind of a production schedule that I'm not familiar with, they didn't have an older kid at the time, right? So, at least one of those kids didn't have an older kid, and those, that family figured out how to care for that kid without having a high school student available, right? And they figured out how to do it with only having maybe a second grader available. So, they had a kindergartner and a second grader, and they figured out how to do it without having the second grader take care of the kindergartner, right? And it's not like that was easy or like, or like it was, you know, we, and there's, but there's nothing that we, in terms of our schedule or our transportation system, could have done to make that easy. It, it was hard, and it's a hard thing, you know? And, but it's not, it's not, we aren't responsible for it. And I guess, I mean, we're responsible for it in the sense that, you know, there's mandatory education in this state, but, you know? So, that's why I'm thinking, when people talk about changes, it's really important to try and think about if the change, in terms of what the benefits of, of the change. Because currently, we do, jump through all these hoops for a system which is clearly detrimental to our, well, actually, to our 13-year-olds and on.
Ms. Vos.
Yeah, just thinking about what I'm hearing, if we go back to thinking about starting 8:00, 8:30, and 9:00, and how the busing could work for that, in terms of what plan would you affect the fewest people in a negative way?
That's a fact.
The bus ridership at the high school, and this is thanks to the bus study that some of you had done that I've looked at, and yeah, maybe it's three, four, or five years old now, and I, I guess we'd want new numbers perhaps, but the bus, the buses leaving the high school at 2:00 don't have very high ridership. They have people who buy the bus pass, but these numbers show these buses are less than half-full typically. And so, if you move to this model of switching the bus time just out of the high school to accommodate JFK and the elementary schools ending on the new proposed time, then you could still start the elementary school closer to 9:00, and it maybe really wouldn't affect as many people. And maybe the question to the school councils and the parents is, how many people are relying on these high school buses at 2:00? And in fact, I'd go to so far as to say, there might be high school students riding the buses home at 2:00 who would rather be staying after school but have no ride home at 4:00. And it might really serve them well to be able to stay there, and I don't know the answer to that. But maybe there's some extra goods that could come out of a model like that and really not have as big an effect on all of the families in our community.
So, that sounds like it's a separate question to ask the high school, the high school council.
I appreciate it's a separate proposal, and I also.
No, I just meant it's a separate question to ask.
Yeah, I also appreciate that we want to not make too many complicated proposals, but I've been thinking about this a lot, and I really, I feel like the least you could move the elementary schools, right? If you change them by five or 10 minutes, that just feels different to me than by this whole half hour later. Even if you started the high school at 8:00 and JFK at 8:25, it's those high school buses at 8:00 that need to get the elementary school kids, and I'm not convinced you'd have to change their time. And, you know, if we could figure out a way to do that, it just keeps more people happy. And I agree, you're not going to make everyone happy. There's going to be people who need the high school bus in my model at 2:00 who are not going to be happy, but it may be a fewer number of people that are inconvenienced.
Mr. Zahalski.
So, just a reminder, the discussion tonight was on the 30-minute move, and so, I think just so that the community knows, and if there's a new upwelling of discussion around what the school committee discussed at its March meeting, was this idea of moving 30 minutes. And so, as we're collecting information from people that we're seeing out in the community, grocery stores, phone, whatever, if we could gather the data around Ms. Hennessy's proposals so that when we come back, we can get a feeling for where the community is around this, instead of adding in a few other tweaks? Because as you can already tell from our discussion tonight, we, there's some, there's a lot of ideas out there for sure. And coming up with a hybrid is going to be really difficult, but this one seems to be the one that's come forward right now. And I'm really interested to hear from my folks in my ward and the people that I come in contact with to see if this is something that we can move forward with. And it seems like this is something that could happen as soon as the fall or, you know, soon thereafter, if we can get support and move it forward, because the change seems to be relatively easy to do and straightforward and easy to understand for folks.
So, then my question is, so, you would.
I feel like I've been tasked to go back to the school councils, let them know that this discussion took place and that the committee is seeking their input.
Okay. Ms. Fallon.
I'm just going to say, based on things that have been mentioned tonight, I think it would be helpful when it goes to the elementary schools for those parents who do utilize the before-school programs to know if those programs would be willing to move up on their coverage, because I think that's really going to affect people's answers. So, it'd be nice going into it, if the school councils knew if it was even a possibility for those before-school programs to.
Do you mean move up with their coverage or stay with their current coverage?
Extend, right, yeah, extend to the, because I can't imagine you're going to get a straight answer from parents without them knowing if they're going to have a gap in coverage.
Thank you, Ms. Hennessy, for sparking tonight's discussion, and to be continued. Next, we have our annual vote on the 2019-2020 district calendar for the upcoming school year. And I would, I guess, ask Dr. Provost to just give us an overview of what that looks like.
So, this calendar has been developed by the administrative leadership team and sent to NACE for their review for contract compliance, and actually does take into account a request we received to make a modification to the professional development days prior to the opening of school, so I just want everybody to know that. So, under this proposal, new teacher orientation would begin on August 22nd and 23rd, August 26th would be convocation and professional development day, August 27th would be a teacher work day, and August 28th would be the first day of school for most, most students. August 28th and 30th would be kindergarten orientation, and then on September 3rd, kindergarten would begin. The last day of school would be June 12th, with five potential makeup days bringing us to June 19th, obviously with a lot of additional padding in there for more than five snow days if necessary. So, that is the proposed calendar for the FY 1920 school year.
Okay. Ms. Burnham.
I just have a question. One of the things that a number of people always ask me about, which is the high school orientation, and on the calendar, we always have the kindergarten orientation listed right in August. And I wonder if we could add the high school one. It's one of, JFK has a different orientation method, but the, when you start as a freshman at the high school, it's actually.
I, I could get that date from the principal and add it to the online posting.
I think that would be really helpful for families. Thanks. And maybe if we move forward, that we always have it on the calendar. Can I, can I say one other thing? I'm so sorry. The other thing that I would ask is that if there was any chance that we could start making the calendar decisions earlier in the year for family, because again, that's another thing, a lot of, I think that the office has been contacted, I know that I've been contacted by people, saying, what's the first day of school? And if we could start doing, you know, people's camps, I mean, it really starts early.
There is a chance. I actually have shared that feedback with the alt because we have had several calls in our office about first day of school. So, our goal will be to bring it forward earlier next year.
Great.
Ms. Vos.
Okay, so, school committee members received an email just sharing with them a resolution regarding, that North Hampton passed now, not quite three years ago, regarding Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I, I do want to share, this came to me in the fall through my neighbor. She asked, she, she emailed me and said, why is it Columbus Day on the menu, on the menu, excuse me, on the, on the calendar? And the way it showed up on her computer, she couldn't see that it said Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I emailed Mayor Narcoitz some questions, and he said, oh, you should bring that up when the calendar comes up. So, that's how this came up for me. And then Dr. Provost shared with the rest of the committee that indeed the school committee had discussed this, something that Ms. Hennessy had brought up in June of 2016, and I did re-watch that today, so I'm up to date with the rest of you. But this neighbor of mine is the woman who spoke tonight, and I think she said it far better than I can, and it's, it's a real passion. But she really has sparked an interest in this for me since we had our conversation in October, and I've, I've paid pretty close attention to it and listened. And when I went to the workshop by Real Racial Equity and Learning in North Hampton, they started, and it was really profound, by just acknowledging that we're sitting in this building on this property that was, you know, essentially taken in aggressive ways. And, and while we don't have methods for reparations, it, just acknowledging that that happened is a first step. And so, when this came up, I, I'm just, I guess I want to propose that we eliminate this term Columbus Day and just refer to this as Indigenous Peoples' Day. That, that's, I believe, what our non-binding yet resolution from our city council encouraged when they passed it almost three years ago. And I'll just add that there's a group, IndigenousPeoplesDayMassachusetts.org, and there are five communities in Massachusetts who celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. Those, and have resolutions, Amherst, Cambridge, Brookline, Somerville, and North Hampton. And in every case, except for North Hampton, the school calendar only says Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I think we should follow them.
I'm just happy to fill in a little bit because I was part of the discussion at the city council level with this. Yeah, they certainly, I mean, well, North Hampton has never celebrated Columbus Day. Oddly enough, we celebrate Pulaski Day. October 10th is Pulaski Day, and that's when we have the Pulaski Day Parade, and it's like, and I issue a proclamation proclaiming it Pulaski Day. So, I think that's, when people, so, we certainly don't celebrate it, there's not a large enough, I guess, Italian-American community, and we don't have a Columbus Day Parade, and we don't, so it's, it's, to me, and then the other piece of it is obviously, Columbus Day is a state holiday established by the legislature. So, they're really the ones, maybe when they fix the state seal, they can work on this one, they could eliminate, they could make the change. So, I, you know, I don't really, by taking away Columbus Day, I don't think it, we don't actually have the power to undeclare Columbus Day a state holiday. We don't, and the, and the city council doesn't, but I think it's just trying to make a statement about it. So, I, I don't know that it's critical that we continue to use Columbus Day on the calendar or not. I mean, so, I don't necessarily have an issue with it, because I, and I frankly don't know that people view it that way, but, Ms. Hennessy?
Yeah, I mean, so, three years ago, we've brought it up and talked about it, and I think it's, you know, I think that was a step. I looked at Cambridge's calendar, they don't, they just have Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think it's the right thing to do for me. That's my perspective, to remove Columbus Day. I'm not not declaring it, but we declared it Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think it's a great opportunity for, for classrooms to talk about it, but I, I believe we should remove it from the calendar. That's, and I think some people might be angry with it, but like Mr. Donnie said, that's okay for me. So, that's my perspective on it.
And there, I mean, there's even some communities who said, get rid of the holiday alt together and make Election Day a holiday.
That.
That's what some.
Put that on the agenda.
There's some communities that have proposed that, or maybe it's getting rid of President's Day, I mean, Election Day a holiday. So, there's lots of different ways to, it's like we're in the late start discussion again, moving holidays around, switching holidays. But, but anyone else want to weigh in on this issue?
Ms. Busansky.
Well, thank you for, you know, that explanation or additional information. I was really moved by the, our, you know, public speaker today, and of course, I've heard, I've heard a bunch of that before, but I think she really made the case for, to me, really compelling about why we should, I guess, call this second Monday of the month, is that what it is, Indigenous People's Day on our calendar? So, I, you know, I would like to, I agree with the movement towards getting rid of Columbus Day on the calendar, on just Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Well, I think the easiest way to effectuate that would be for someone to make a motion to approve the calendar with the, you know, minus Columbus Day on the calendar.
I'll just offer a comment before we do that. I'm actually, if, I'm going to actually vote to leave it the way that it is, Columbus Day slash Indigenous Day. It's one of 10 federal holidays, you know, on our calendar, we have Independence Day, we have Labor Day, we have Memorial Day, we have New Year's Day, we have Christmas Day. These are the 10 holidays as they've been defined and outlined through the federal government. I have no problem whatsoever, whatsoever with having Indigenous Peoples' Day added on. I think what Mayor Narcoitz said is very true. I'm a lifelong resident of North Hampton, and if you asked me as a child, on the second Monday of October, what do you do and what do you celebrate? I mean, we celebrated, you know, Kashmir Pulaski Day. And for me, that day was more about the parade and the celebration, going to my church and having a banquet over on Holly Street than it was about celebrating anything to do with Christopher Columbus. So... So for me, recognizing it on the calendar as what it's designated by state and federal law, to have Columbus Day acknowledged for that day off for municipalities and city and government officials, to me, just seems like what it is. To add the Indigenous Peoples' Day on there also, to me, seems fine as well. It's an opportunity to, and I've said this before, if you go back and watch the videos, I'm sure that you did when we had this discussion. I come from a family of farmers. My grandfather tilled the land down in the, in the North Hampton Meadows. I still go down there, and I feel really peaceful when I'm down there. I feel a presence of the people that were here before I was. I have a wonderful collection of Native American arrowheads that my, my grandfather found and feels. I feel a strong connection to those folks that, as Dr. Voss said, you know, whose land, this was rightfully theirs before any of us were here. I totally get that. What I have a concern about is the idea that on other federal holidays, that we might want to add another name on to acknowledge something that's important to our community and people as well, on other federal holidays. If we want to do that, I'd be willing to have a conversation and talk about Independence Day and maybe what we might want to also put on our calendar, or Labor Day, or Memorial Day, or Christmas Day, or whatever it is, but add on to it and not take away from. And so, that would be my reason for voting against taking off the Columbus Day. Not because I don't support the Indigenous Peoples' Day portion of it, but to acknowledge that on calendars, state and federal calendars, you're going to see Columbus Day because it's been designated by the government.
Okay. I'll have Ms. Voss respond, and then Ms. Fallon.
Thanks. Yeah. I'm sorry you weren't here to see Laurel Davis Delino and, or hear what she had to say, but I won't be able to be as articulate as she was. But one of the things that really struck me is just more recent interpretations of history, what a really horrible person Columbus was. And so we have this name on our children's calendar of somebody who came here and behaved in all the ways that we try to teach kids not to behave. And so I think just that name being on that calendar, a lot of people find offensive. And it makes a statement that says, "We value how we treat each other. We value things like this position for equity." You know, when we celebrate something about Columbus Day, we're sending a message. I know our teachers teach the more modern way of thinking about Columbus Day, but I just don't think that name belongs on the calendar anymore, given what we know now.
Ms. Fallon?
I'm really torn, I have to be honest, between being aspirational and being reflecting what is in fact the state holiday. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I, I love that Indigenous Peoples' Day is on the calendar, and I am happy with removing Columbus Day once it is removed by an act of the legislature. But in the meantime, it seems strange to me to just remove something from the calendar that factually exists and is celebrated as such at the state level. Do you know what I'm saying? Because at that point then, at what point do we stop representing reality? You know what I mean? Like, I'd rather fight to have this change made so that it's, you know, like you said, we're celebrating Election Day or, you know, and not celebrating this at all. But as long as it is on the, the calendar, like, as long as it's celebrated as such, it seems strange to me to kind of remove that representation. Do you know what I'm saying? To, to just kind of ignore things that are true, like that are...
Yeah. And, and as I said, I think I've, I've learned a lot about this. So what I've learned is it is up to the state. Federal holidays don't matter. There's a lot of states that don't acknowledge Columbus Day. I've seen anywhere from five to 24 states listed on lists that don't acknowledge Columbus Day. Where I grew up, we didn't even get off from school for it. At the state level, you're right, but the state doesn't do everything right. We see it, right now, we have an issue where hopefully the state seal will be changed on our flag. And there's, again, people on both sides of that. But there's clearly precedent in our state. There's nothing illegal about not calling this Columbus Day on a school calendar. Other communities have done it. And I think our community, through the city council and the resolution that they passed, basically, through our elected officials on city council, said, "This is not something that we're proud of and that represents us." And I think we should go ahead and be done, remove it.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman have the next hand, and then come back over here.
We've left out July on purpose. Okay. I guess I understand. There's also a typo under November 28th and 29th. That's not really why I raise my hand. So, we, I think, I think December 25th is Columbus, is Christmas, right? And we actually have, it seems to me like we already made some precedent of taking out a state holiday and a federal holiday by not naming Christmas, Christmas Day, in, just countering some of the points that people have made, that we can't do this, or we shouldn't be doing this. In my mind, I know that we could, we have it in there as holiday recess, but in every other calendar, it says Christmas. So I think that previously, we have already done a removal of a state holiday. I just want, I just wanted to point that out, that it's not like, it's not like we haven't known before, and there's been some serious discussion about it in the past, but it's not the first time we've done this. And I hear some of the reaction. But I think if this is important to people, as several people have brought up, and we have to debate it each time, then we probably have to debate it each time. I'd rather do that, and I'd rather debate it and make, make decisions about things that are obviously outrageous to some people, more so than others perhaps, and, and go from there. The only thing I'm hesitant about, I'm kind of excited to make a decision and not, and not debate this to death, but I do feel a little bit like we owe it to the community, it wasn't on the, the agenda specifically. And I kind of feel like we owe it to open it up. And I know I'm opening up a can of worms by saying that, but there's part of me that feels like we need to make that decision at the next meeting. So in case anybody feels really strong about opposing it, that we've given that opportunity to do so. And I bite my tongue honestly as I say it. I'd much rather vote on it today, but it doesn't feel like responsible enough to do that.
And then the, I mean, the only other thing I would say is that then that has implications for when we approve the final school calendar, so, and we've already heard that people, we're already too late in approving it, so that would just be my...
Okay. I mean, I would say technically, we can probably approve it with one caveat for next time, but we can approve the dates. If that's helpful, we can approve the dates and debate the name at next time, just as an idea. I don't think, I don't want to hold anybody up for sure.
So, there were a lot of hands. So Ms. Busansky, do you have a hand? Okay.
Yeah, she was first.
Okay.
You know, I just, I think you bring up an interesting point, Ms. Fallon. I think that this is how change happens. And I think we've done plenty of things, you know, we banned plastic bags, and now, look, we have the state considering banning plastic bags. I mean, this is how change happens. Massachusetts passed gay marriage. Look, our whole country is now, gay marriage is legal. Hurrah! I mean, there's lots of ways that municipalities, cities, towns affect change. And this is the beginning, I think, of, we're seeing a wave of people saying that they reject what Columbus did, and they reject naming a holiday after him. And it is time to move to a different name. And if that's Indigenous Peoples' Day, then I feel at peace with that. And so that's really why I think this is important. It's not about reflecting reality. We sell marijuana, federal government would tell us that's illegal, as a matter of fact they have. So, you know, but, I don't know, we legalized it in Massachusetts. So there's plenty of ways that we differ. And so I don't follow the, I don't believe the federal state holiday is, has to be some guidepost that we have to follow, no matter what our beliefs are.
So...
I just have a quick comment.
Okay. Ms. Burnham, and then Mr. Zahalsky.
My quick comment is, I think that I, I do support changing the name. But actually, but my concern about it is sort of policy. And we have a policy around, we're, we're developing, we're working very hard to make a policy around naming schools and trees and buildings. And I'm curious how this fits into a policy. And it, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of just tossing that out, and I don't know how it, how it does, but how do we begin to make decisions and when do these things get changed and things, so...
Dr. Provost?
If I could throw out an option for the committee. Because I'm concerned with making, giving our community some clarity on when school starts and ends, which is really the main purview of the school committee in reviewing the calendar, making sure it has 180 days and the five extra days. We could pass the calendar tonight with October 14th to be determined. We could post that, and then at a, a future meeting, we could change, you know, we could decide what we're going to call the 14th. That way, families would be communicated to about the start and end of the school year.
Okay. Mr. Zahalsky?
So I would offer the recommendation, but based on something I heard Mr. Kaufman say a few minutes ago, the change moving away from identifying Christmas Day as Christmas and having it as winter recess or holiday. I see the second Monday of October as a state holiday. I don't know how people would feel about it. It's very bland and generic, but we could call the second Monday, just have it on the calendar as a state holiday. I mean, that's what it is. It's a day off from school. It's a state holiday. It doesn't have Columbus's name on it. It doesn't have Indigenous Peoples' name on it. I certainly get that. But people are going to go out and acknowledge the day in the way in which they were going to acknowledge it. It's a day off on a school calendar, and it's labeled as such, a day off from school.
Ms. Voss?
I, we all got it in the email. I'll just remind us all, our city council passed a resolution that says the second Monday of October in North Hampton should be called Indigenous Peoples' Day.
But our city council doesn't have that authority. It's an aspirational, it would be an ordinance. If they had the authority, they'd pass an ordinance, and I'd sign it. It's, and they don't have authority over the schools.
That's right. No, that's right.
So, so when you say, "Our city council handed down to us," we're actually parallel. We're the school committee, they're the city council, the twain shall never meet. Like, they don't interfere in our work, and we don't interfere in their work. So that's why we have a separate elected body that's mirrors, you know, the same makeup. So, you know, so they did say, "We urge, we recommend," but I, I'm often having to defend the independence of the city, of the school committee to the city council. So that, I mean, just because, again, I fully support what they wanted to do, and they are proclaiming that that day is, they would like it to be known as Indigenous People's Day, but, but they didn't, note that they didn't say that, and you must remove all mention of Columbus Day in anywhere. I mean, so anyway, just like I issue a proclamation every year that declares the day is to be called Pulaski Day. So, I actually like, I like that. I mean, what if you were to just say Indigenous Peoples' Day slash state holiday? Would that be a problem?
It's another idea, but...
I'm just saying, like, what, like, drop Columbus Day, just say state, it's a state holiday. We're not going to say what the state holidays call, but we're also calling it Indigenous Peoples' Day here in North Hampton.
Oh, sorry.
Hybrid of your hybrid.
I love the hybrid of the hybrid. I just want to say, though, three years ago, we voted to add Indigenous Peoples' Day. I don't think in our policies, I'm naming, we weren't saying, "Let's take away all the names we've already named before." But I think for this one, I love the hybrid of the hybrid. So for me, that's, I like Indigenous Peoples' Day slash state holiday.
That works for me.
That's, that's for me. And I think we should vote on it, because I do want to get it over with.
I agree.
And I just think, this is what we're changing, we do on the dates, and we could hear flak or not, and change it, but...
Ms. Fallon?
I would just ask that you all remember this moment in like, a few minutes, when we talk about the naming policy. This is exactly why we want to stop naming things after people, because with historical perspective, you run into this issue. And I love the hybrid of the hybrid. And it's not that I don't absolutely support Indigenous Peoples' Day, I just wanted to raise the point that it is a state holiday. So that was, that was all I was looking to do. So I can get behind this.
So we're not implying that it's a state holiday.
So, can I make a motion?
Please.
Do I need to amend the previous one, or just, I guess, make a mo... The motion would be to list on the school calendar, the holiday in October whose date is now blacked out? Sorry.
The second Monday.
The second Monday, yes, of next year, to list it as Indigenous Peoples' Day slash state holiday.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of approving the calendar as, with that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. That was some excellent sausage making we just did. Excellent. Perfect. So, the next item on the agenda is the distribution of the FY 20 budget book, which is at your table, and I believe Dr. Provost will walk you through.
Yes, just hitting some of the highlights. I'll also point out that tonight, we had hands-free tweeting once again, so this is now posted on the website, for those of you who are watching and want to follow along at home. So, first, I'll point out Superintendent's Budget Message, paragraph number four, because it's been highlighted by one of the members as particularly compelling. So if you can only read one paragraph in the Superintendent's Budget, that may be the one to look at. Next, going to tab one, see the requested appropriation, $30,743,780. That represents a 3.5% increase in the North Hampton schools' budget. Tab two is the first view budget, which you've seen already. On tab three, and all of the individual cost center tabs, I will point out that the fourth column shows the additional FTEs that are included in the FTE, in the first view budget. So, tab three is Bridge Street. There's an increase of 1.2 FTEs. That's a full-time tiered support position and a .2 ELL teacher.
Where are you referring to there?
I'm on tab three, three pages in.
The notes column, or...
The proposed column. It's at the bottom, very bottom of the column.
I do now, thank you.
And that's the same convention in each of the tabs. So, moving along to tab four, which is Jackson Street, three pages in, you'll see that chart again. Here, there's one, you see a, it really is .67 because .33 of that position is already there, and a .4 ELL teacher, ESL teacher. In tab five, which is Leeds, again, going three pages in. You see, here, there are reductions as well as additions, because this reflects moving one of the preschools from Leeds to the high school. So you see the reduction of the preschool, yeah, two preschool ESPs and preschool teacher. Those are not reductions in staff, that's just moving from one cost center to the next, and the addition of a tiered specialist. I'm flying through this right now just to highlight things, but I should point out that every tab begins with description of the cost center. Those are really interesting reads and tell a lot about what's been happening at the schools over the course of the year. The next tab...
Are all those changes you just reviewed, this consistent with what you presented to us last week?
Yes.
Nothing changed since then?
No changes. There's one thing coming up that I failed to mention last week, which I'll point out when we get to it. So, tab six is Ryan Road School. Their profile is three pages long, so you go to four, the fourth page, and you'll see the staff FTEs. And it's one and a half staff. There's an additional halftime academic support teacher, and there's an additional ESP. I didn't talk about ESPs in last, in the first view budget, because they net out to zero. There are two ESPs added at the elementary schools, but there are two ESPs removed from the middle school. So it's no impact to the budget, just again, moving staff from one cost center to the Tab seven, JFK Middle School, three pages in, you can see their staffing sheet, and that's where you can see the reduction of the two ESPs. But you'll also see the inclusion of half of the 504 coordinator, that's a split position between the high school and JFK. So half of the position is reflected in both cost centers. The two math interventionists, the one special education teacher, and the .4 ESL teacher. You can notice that they appear in two columns, because the proposal is to put some of those positions within the appropriation, and some of those within other funds within the budget. But they're all there. Tab eight is the high school. And they have a two-page sheet, because they have more line items than anyone else. And they have a two-page sheet because they have more line items than anyone else. And they have sort of the most complicated piece because they have lots of partial positions and they also have the preschool. So, you see, the other half of the 504 coordinator, the additional math teacher, the .5 Innovation Pathway Coordinator, the .5 Transition Coordinator, it's all the way at the bottom, the addition of the .7, .17 Music Teacher. There's a reduction of an interpreter because that was moved to another source of funding. And then you see the staff from Leeds, the two pre-K ESPs and the one pre-K teacher. Tab nine is athletics. Page four, I think, is my favorite page in the athletic cost center budget, it's the one I look to when I'm trying to sort of take it all in at a glance. This shows the FY '20 athletic budget from all sources of funding. And I would just like to add one little piece to what I had said about the athletic budget at the last meeting. Talked about the $13,000 as being sort of just the cost of living increases of continuing to run the program. One thing that contributes to that is our, our athletic fees are down because we're getting more students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch at the high school participating in the athletic program, so that reduces the income we receive from athletic fees. So, that has, that has part to do with that. Tab 10 is student services. They have a lengthy profile because of the many programs and services they provide. So, five pages in gets to their staffing sheet. You can see the additional clerical position and the reduction of that .33 BCBA that I discussed, which was formerly in the Special Education Cost Center, but now will be in the Jackson Street Cost Center. Tab 11 is maintenance. And here is that, that oversight that I wanted to point out. If you go three pages in, you can see there is an additional floater custodian position. That was created with reductions to the other, to some other line items within the maintenance cost center. We have difficulty not only finding and keeping custodians, as we pointed out in discussions prior, we also have difficulty getting substitute custodians. So, the floater position is there in anticipation that we're going to continue to experience high turnover in custodian ranks, and we want to have someone who we're able to deploy to different buildings to cover the vacancies as they come up. So...
John, I'm sorry. How would that person, where would they be, like, on a regular, if there wasn't, if one day, all schools had everybody?
So, I don't know if that's something you might have talked to Tony about?
I did talk to Tony. There's one of those things that there's always a need at one of the schools.
Okay. So, and tabs 13 and 14, I don't think there's really anything to note, I mean, it's all important to read, but as we're quickly walking through, the next thing I want to point out is in section 13, we have some new pages this year. So, this is, Emmy's sort of beginning to push her own imprint on the budget book. So, hard without page numbers to direct you to them, but if you go in, one, two, three, four, seventeen pages into that tab, you should find a price that's, a page that's called School Price Equity Calculations.
Lunch Price.
School, School Lunch Price Equity Calculations. This is a new page in the budget. It shows the impact of the proposed increase, 10 cent increase, and lunches would be...
The 275 is the current price. The second page that I put in it is with the proposed price increase of the 10 cents, 285.
So, that's just more information on how that would play out. And then, two pages after that, you can see our projections for food service meal revenue for the FY '20 budget. You can see that we're estimating that we would net in additional $8,000 from the price increase in lunch. Again, that's in the context of having an $18,000 increased deficit, so this is just looking to offset a portion of that. We are also in this budget asking the school committee to increase subsidy to the school lunch program so that the lunch price doesn't have to go up more than that.
I have a question. Is that a typo, or on the second page, the School Lunch Price Equity Calculations, where it says, "School Year 2018-19," and then with the proposed?
Oh, yeah.
Is that right? Did that say that right?
Yep, I will...
So, what's, so the proposal is the proposal, but that should say 20?
Down the bottom.
Yeah, okay.
Wait, what?
And then the page right after the meal revenue analysis is another new page, also about food services. This shows our reimbursement from the state for our lunches. So, that's just more information on how that works. The rest of the budget are just updated worksheets that you've seen before. So, with that, I would send you off to study. We haven't had a lot of public feedback on the budget so far this year. We did have our joint school council meeting on the budget two days ago. I would say the feedback we got from the school councils at that meeting was very positive about what we're trying to do with the budget. Two pieces of, three, I think we've received three pieces of written feedback. I'm doing this from memory right now, so I have to correct this. But I think we received positive comment on raising the price for, the hourly rate for subs, positive comment on the budget overall, and a comment asking if we could get librarians into the budget. So, that's, that's the book.
Thank you, Dr. Provost. Now, we turn to our Rules and Policy colleagues and to talk about the aforementioned policies around naming and memorials, FF, and Teaching About Alcohol and Drugs, IHAMB. I'll turn it over to the chair.
Yes, so Policy FF, naming and memorials, is a serious departure from the prior policy we had in place, and essentially says that when the school committee decides to name or rename a building or facility, it'll call an ad hoc committee to recommend a name, and that the name should include the location and purpose of the building or facility, and then the recommended name will be placed upon the agenda for a vote at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the full superintendent. And as you see with, of course, the issues with the calendar, we were trying to avoid situations where we name a building after a person and then, from a perspective, historical perspective, realized that perhaps that was not the person we wanted to name a building after. And then memorials, it suggested that people who wish to honor, memorialize, or commemorate an individual or event should do so by planting a tree, creating a scholarship, an endowed lecturer, or performance, and that they can make their proposal to the superintendent or a school principal. And so, yeah, it's a dramatically shorter, simpler policy. I'm not sure what everyone thought of it, but I'd like to move to, move to accept Policy FF as amended.
Is there a second from Mr. Moore? Any discussion about this policy?
Yeah, there are, there are two typos.
Go ahead.
The last sentence, person, it says, "So wishing to so honor a person," I would just say wishing, remove that first "so," and then it says, "Consistent with policies KCD," and the "D" is missing, KCE.
So, you would amend your motion to include those corrections?
Yes.
Some Scribner's errors? Yes?
I have a comment. Thank you very much. I think you hit the nail on the head. It's awesome, and I've read the various versions, and I don't know how, you know, I think it's really great.
Mr. Moore was kind of instrumental in narrowing our focus.
Well, I did write, it was three pages long first.
Good writer.
Short, to the point, simple.
It's all in the revision.
Okay.
I do have a comment, though. I think, you know, the, just to be clear, it's, it's always in the implementation of, I'll see where it matters. It's really hard, you know, when, when things come up. Because people do, you know, for really good reasons, want to memorialize individuals or honor them one way or another, and I think that, so it's going to be important going forward for everybody to kind of remember that, and remember, sort of, the point is not to keep people from being honored in a public and meaningful way, but to try to make sure, in fact, that it's, that it also serves our students well.
Somewhere, there's a Christopher Columbus High School that probably are regretting that, so.
So, I found a day of joy.
Any other discussions? There's been a motion made and seconded to approve with those amendments? Any further discussion further? Okay. All those in favor of approving the new Policy FF, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, now, move on to IHAMB.
Okay. The next policy is a new one. It's Policy IHAMB, Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs. It is reflective of the changes with Mass General Laws 71.1 and 71.96, and was recommended by the MASC in March of 2016. We did make one change to the MASC recommended policy, and that was that the curriculum, instructional materials, and outcomes used in this program should be recommended by the superintendent and approved by the school committee, because we didn't feel that it was our role as the school committee to approve the curriculum that was prescribed, in this case, by state law. And, and then, I would like to move to approve it with the change of the cross-reference, JICH. We recently renamed that policy, and so I think it's our newest policy, iteration of policy, JICH, is Drug and Alcohol Use Prohibited. And we removed the "by students" because it actually applied to staff as well.
And visitors.
And visitors. So, yeah, I would like to move to approve Policy IHAMB with the change to the cross-reference.
So, there's been a motion to move that policy forward with those changes? And a second, any discussion of this policy? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so both of the policies are now approved. Any further report from the Rules and Policy Committee?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you so much. Now, we'll move on to the Business Administrator's Report, followed by the Personnel Report.
So, in your packet was the monthly appropriation report through March 6. There's a few accounts that have deficits, some transfers that are still in progress, but a few you approved earlier this evening. So, that should take care of some of those. In the gifts, we have some PTO gifts that have been made. We have a total of four gifts, two at JFK totaling $600. We have two at Jackson Street totaling $881.12. And your two warrants that were signed by your representative in the month of February is also included in your packet for this evening. And also have personnel reports, we have one new hire during the month of February.
Okay.
In the EST.
Thank you very much. Now, we move to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. We have a lot to celebrate this month. In addition to the Northampton Girls' Basketball postseason campaign for a state title and the return of the High School Musical, which kicks off tonight, we also had two eighth graders named as National Scholastic Art and Writing Award Silver Medalists. Congratulations go to Abigail Smith and Lucien Vajay for earning national distinction. Additionally, we had 15 more eighth graders who were recognized at the state level for their writing. Our state award winners are Dahlia Breslow, James Hart, Haley Higgins, Ashla Culp, Ally Lynch, Taylor Lynch, Ava Madden, Elia Massener, Colby Perron, Trey Rivera, Eloise Roberti, Riley Shea, Aquinas Simone, Jenna Wooster, and Samantha Zanveter. This month, we also recognized four of our teachers as Grin Spoon Excellence in Teaching Award winners. They are Leslie Stein, a special educator from Bridge Street School, Caitlin Myers, JFK Grade Six Science Teacher, Clara Williams, of course, JFK band teacher, and NHS Technology Teacher and frequent public commenter Jeremy Whalen. We can also celebrate the fact that our governor and state legislators have laid concrete proposals on the table to improve school funding. In athletics and academic competitions, we accept processes that create many more losers than winners because the experience of competition calls forth the best in our students. But school finance is entirely different matter, and the goal should be to provide the greatest good for the greatest number rather than groups of winners and losers. I think there's widespread agreement that now is the time to fix the state education formula because the list of losing communities under the current formula has become so long. I think you could include just about every community from our area on that list, but I have a personal experience in Northampton as well as its neighboring community, Holyoke, so I'll focus on what's happening there. Let me start with what the current funding formula got right. The model assumes that high-need populations are most costly to educate, and they're often located in cash-strapped communities that cannot adequately fund their schools. It seeks to provide a threshold of opportunity for all students with the understanding that state revenue is necessary to mitigate between community wealth inequalities. Looking at Northampton and Holyoke, all of those assumptions are correct. When educational reform began in 1993, students of Holyoke experienced much higher rates of economic and linguistic diversity than their neighbors in Northampton. Even though student need was higher in Holyoke, Northampton spent more to educate its students, about 13% more per student. 25 years later, that has changed. Now, Holyoke spends about 13% more than Northampton on a per pupil basis, which is right. I can tell you, as someone who worked in Holyoke, it takes more money to educate students in Holyoke. And it was the formula that made that correction possible. At the outset, Holyoke received about 50% more in state funding per pupil than Northampton. Now, it receives 400% more per pupil. So, that money came from the state. The money didn't come from Holyoke because they don't have the money. The problem with the formula is that it's failed to keep pace with the cost of education. As a result, many communities are now in a relatively worse position than they were at the beginning of the process, and inequality is just as large of a problem as it was 25 years ago. In 1993, for example, Chapter 70 supported about a third of Northampton's education budget and 91% of Holyoke's. Now, it accounts for only 13% of education spending in Northampton and 87% in Holyoke. Not only are both communities shouldering a greater proportion of the costs, the, between community inequalities are even greater than they were in the beginning. For the first several years of education reform, both communities funded their schools at the minimum required amount, known as, you know, 100% foundation. Now, Holyoke is still at the minimum amount, while Northampton has been able to exceed the adequacy threshold by more than 25%. And that 25% makes a huge difference, as every employee we've hired from Holyoke will tell you, and I'll tell you, I feel a little bit guilty about robbing Holyoke. But as this tale of two cities illustrates, communities are paying more for a system that is even less equitable than when it first got started. This helps to explain why we now have 16 education funding bills introduced since the beginning of the year. The list seems to be growing every day. Bills are coming out faster than the analysis from our professional organizations. I've done my best to read and analyze all of the potential bills and think about their potential impact for Northampton prior to next... their potential impact for Northampton, prior to next Friday's Education Committee hearing. I'll say the PROMISE Act is clearly the marquee piece of legislation with support from members of both chambers. I've been pressing three points of the PROMISE Act with our local delegation and with, through my professional organization, and I just want to point them out, because people have asked what our advocacy can be around it, and for me, I think it's around these three points. One is it doesn't specify a timeline for implementation of the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations. It doesn't identify a funding source for implementation, and it makes implementation subject to appropriation. As you know, at the last meeting, I handed out a sheet showing the almost quarter of a million dollars of current education funding programs for Northampton that are not fully funded, because they're subject to appropriation. So I think we should support this legislation, I think I'll be supporting it, but I'll be supporting it as a step in the path, rather than as a solution to the problem. So I think I'm going to be a gadfly supporter. I would recommend, if anyone's asking for my opinion, that they should be gadfly supporters. I'll be asking, what's the timeline? Where's the revenue going to come from? Good part about this legislation is that it commits the legislature to identifying a timeline for implementation. When that comes forward, then I think that becomes the next piece of advocacy that we need to work on keeping, holding people's feet to the timeline. And also saying that you, it's really important that you not meet the timeline by taking money away from other education funding programs that are also subject to appropriation. So I'm very happy about the excitement for the hearing. I'm glad that we had some public comments about the hearing at the beginning of the meeting, but I would ask everyone to prepare for a prolonged advocacy struggle. The PROMISE Act may be the culmination of one stage of the school finance reform process that began with a set of hearings, including a hearing here in Northampton High School that the mayor and I both testified at, but I think we have many miles to go before we sleep on this issue. That's my report.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Provost. We have some future business and meeting dates. The negotiating subcommittee will be meeting on March 18, 2019, at 4:15 p.m. in the Superintendent's Office. The Rules and Policy Subcommittee will be meeting March 25, 12 noon, in the Superintendent's Office. The negotiating subcommittee will meet again on March 25, 2019, at 4:15 p.m. in the NHS Library. The School Committee Budget Meeting, which is our second meeting of this month, will be March 28, 2019, at 6:45 p.m. here at Community Room. And then the negotiating subcommittee is scheduled again on April 3, 2019, at 4:15 p.m. in the JFK Community Room. Finally, we have a request for an executive session on the agenda, and I would ask if the Vice Chair would make that motion, so that we could vote to move an executive session.
Make a motion for an executive session. Request for an executive session under Massachusetts General Law Open Meeting, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Northampton Association of School Employees, whereas an open session would have a detrimental effect, and further details would compromise the reason for going into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Molly Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Beckley Sanford?
Yes.
Laura Fowler?
Yes.
Ms. Sanfenest?
Yes.
Mr. Lloyd Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Darren Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Voss?
Yes.
Mr. Edson House?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll just announce to the public that we will be moving into an executive session, because to hold this discussion would be detrimental to the city's bargaining position. And secondarily, I need to announce that we will adjourn from executive session, we will not return to open session. Thank you very much.